Tyler. What is it?
Absolutely, I was gonna hit on you anyway.
Well, as long as, so what is, that's fine, as long as something is going. Can we always, can we go back and...
Did you see that house?
Really? You're kidding?
Good evening, I'd like to call the Masonville Board of Commissioners Thursday, April the 11th to order. We'll begin with our invocation, Reverend Lees, please. Thank you Reverend Lees. Roll call please.
Commissioner Grammer.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Mayor Cotterill.
Yes ma'am.
City Manager Wallingford.
Here.
City Attorney Cottle.
Here.
Commissioner Rosasta.
Here.
HR Director Rose.
Yeah.
Project Coordinator Horde.
Here.
Public Works Director King. Police Chief Palmer.
Here.
Assistant Fire Chief Carpenter.
Oh look, he's in with her.
Fire Chief Doyle.
Here.
Utility Manager Spence.
Here.
Athletic Administrator Largier.
Here.
Building Inspector Fawcett.
Here.
Code's Office Doc.
Yeah.
Sheriff's Department Director Bailey.
Yeah.
Main Street Director Reese.
Here.
Thank you, I'd also like to recognize Judge Dylan McNeil is with us and County Commissioner Mr. Joe Kay. Thank you.
Hey Mayor.
Minutes of...
You got your new economic...
Well, we're going, we're going into, yeah.
Minutes from March 14th, 23 regular meeting and department reports.
Still moved?
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Grammer.
I'm thinking about it, no, I'm joking, yeah.
Mr. Cartwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill.
Yes ma'am.
Now I would like, uh, Mr. Kevin Doyle to come forward.
Ohhh.
Get up here.
I wasn't even here.
We done this, sir, but you still wasn't here.
What do you want, cake or steak?
Kevin, I just want to thank you, for those who don't know, maybe Kevin is retiring and this is his last city commission meeting. And I want to express our appreciation, not only for the job you've done, but the leadership that you've given both the department and the city staff. And how you've elevated that department and so much, uh, respect from our community and the services that you provided. So, thank you and best wishes on your return.
I'm not gonna give a big speech, but I will say that the city has done me, the city has done me very, very well. If I would've known that, uh, I wouldn't have been called up here tonight, I probably would've skipped out on this. The city has treated me well, they have provided a, a good living for, uh, for me to provide to my family. I'll always consider the, the fire department the best job in the world. Just very, very fortunate to be a part of the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you Chief. Mayor, if I may, uh, I would like to introduce our new Economic Development Director, Mr. Tyler McHugh. And Mr. McHugh, if you would come forward. Yeah, if you'd like to, uh, if you'd like to say a few words, uh, but we're, we're, we're very happy to have Tyler here and, uh, staying here in the community to represent Masonville and Mason County, and, uh, I think he's gonna do a great job.
I would just like to first thank the Sutien County for their vote of confidence along with the IBA board. This is a huge honor for me to come back to my hometown of Masonville, Kentucky. It's been a long time and I'm truly very excited to serve the county and the city. Thank you.
Thanks Tyler. And Mayor, if I may, I'd like to call on Judge McNeil real quick to give everybody an update on the broadband project. Judge?
Sure, um, broadband project moving along well, we are, uh, working with Charter Inspector on, uh, their progress across Mason County and Masonville. Shortly later this month, beginning next month, we're gonna be pulling together update meetings, monthly update meetings, with not only their construction team, but also the teams with our poll owners, RECC Fleming Mason and Kentucky Utilities, KU. These, uh, these update meetings will hopefully, uh, provide a little bit of light on their progress that made across Masonville and Mason County.
And Judge, is it my understanding that they have started construction on the southeast end of the county?
Yes.
Okay, they have started, they have begun construction?
Yep, coming in from that direction.
Okay.
So, uh, I think it's gonna be important to get, uh, project managers, uh, day before and the city's team from a lot of conduits in downtown, very conduit in downtown, on those calls and, you know, we're welcome forward. You know, also from the broader spectrum component and, uh, you know, wind stream communication is continuing to invest across portions of Mason County from some of the federal ARPA monies. And our own performance broadband limestone is, uh, expanding out Jersey Ridge Road. And so, uh, citizens in Masonville and Mason County are gonna see a lot more utility trucks, telecom trucks, uh, here in Mason County.
Thank you Judge.
Commissioner, do you have some questions?
I just got a few comments, um, I'll be brief, I know that some of you won't believe that. Darren, is there any update on when we're going to fix that road at Union and Second?
Uh, TK has, uh, been notified and we're hopefully going to get it milled down in Blacktop very soon.
Okay, like what's that mean?
We had to wait on, we had to wait on the plans to open up, so yeah, it should be, you've got it on the patch list, don't you?
He's gonna work on Airenden Avenue next week, it should happen next week.
This month? Okay. And I would like to give a shout out to Mark Goldstein and his neighbors in the 400 block of Forest Avenue. They, uh, hauled, picked up 11 bags of trash on Reynolds Drive. And they said, "It's a mess all the time." But, they utilized the dumpsters, and that's what they were there for. So it'd be great if people in each part of, each part of town, regardless of where that, would, would stand up and do the same.
And we would be more than happy to pass out the, the garbage bags and gloves, whatever anybody needs, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, speaking of that, since you brought that up, there are three bags as soon as you pull in to Reynolds Drive off of...
We'd get them.
Commerce?
We'll get them tomorrow, get them tomorrow, we'll go ahead and pack her out.
Yeah, we're gonna need some help, they, two of them couldn't pick them up, it's just full of weeds and debris that's been sitting in there.
Reynolds and Commerce?
Yeah, yeah, as soon as you pull in, you can't see.
Did you get that behind the house I was talking to about Reynolds Drive?
They, they got it on there.
They got it, they did.
Luke, why don't you maybe, while we're on this, uh, subject, talk about the dumpsters and the dates of when they're gonna be out? And then Caitlin, would you mind to share the effort that you did on the Masonville cleanup initiative?
So, come forward Luke, so we can get you on the mic. Just, you say by Chief, or come up here, whatever you wanna do.
So our dumpster cleanups, uh, we have designated locations for the dumpsters. I can't read them off the top of my head, but they're online, Facebook, I can get anybody a copy, I can get anybody a copy. They're still running until Monday, uh, Monday morning, working up the roll of dumpsters. But anything you wanna put in there, you know, they're all throughout town, uh, Public Works, Washington, up on Top of the Hill, so, anything else?
When will we do that again?
Usually around June.
Yeah, around June.
Matt and I'll plan it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get with you before we do that.
Quarterly.
Luke, I'd like to give you guys kudos.
Yes, for cleaning it up.
For picking up, uh, all the tin from the warehouse roofs that was...
No problem, no problem.
That was in...
The guys do an awesome job and...
They do.
Yeah.
And all the trees.
Yeah.
Those, those major trees.
Thanks, they do a great job, a lot easier.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There she is.
Deborah.
Come forward.
Deborah and I recorded a minute with the mayor today about this spring cleanup and about the Masonville Community Initiative, uh, to clean up, uh, the area. And we did a press release that ran in the London Independent, and then we did backpack stuffers that went out the Wednesday before spring break. So that went to both St. Pat and then all the, uh, Mason County Public Schools, K through 12. So every student got a backpack stuffer that listed why they should want to clean up their neighborhood, uh, what steps they should take, and then a list of where all the dumpsters were located and when they would be pulled, so when they, when the dumpsters would be out. And we can do that for every cleanup moving forward, we can redo the pamphlet and keep sending it out to get people involved.
Hoping that people will take pride in their communities and contribute and, you know, pitch in, so that it doesn't become a bigger issue and, uh, overall. Any other public announcements?
We have the Buffalo Trace Firefighters Association has their food truck festival next week.
You're gonna take, take his, his, his honor away, John? You're gonna take his thunder? Tell you what.
Hey, guess what guys? If you wanna find a way to celebrate a career of Kevin Doyle, a great place to have food trucks. So come down April 19th and enjoy some food and cold drinks and help out not only the Mason Fire Department, but the fire department's all over the region, the Buffalo Trace area, and come support us at the food truck festival. We appreciate it and we thank Masonville for always supporting the Buffalo Trace Firefighters Association.
What were those dates again?
The 19th and 12th.
Thank you. Public comment? Appointments and reappointments?
Mayor, we do have one appointment that, uh, the board needs to make, uh, Sheriff Boggs contacted me the other day and, uh, former Chief Muse was a member of the Buffalo Trace Gateway Narcotic, Narcotics Task Force. So he has spoken to Chief Palmer about serving on that, so the motion would be to appoint Chief Michael Palmer as the City of Masonville's representative to the Buffalo Trace Gateway Narcotics Task Force for administrative bookkeeping.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Grammer.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill.
Yes ma'am.
Discussion, Main Street vacant property ordinance?
After our meeting last month, uh, Caroline and I sat down and we, we amended the ordinance that we passed back in the fall to add the provisions that she and her board had discussed. And essentially what we did, the, the major changes were to Section 201.27, in which we titled "Conditional Permitted Situations." And this is basically where, you know, we don't wanna be punitive with this ordinance, we wanna work with individuals. And this gives folks who are, who have property identified as vacant, the opportunity to work with us to get it taken care of and not be vacant or abandoned. So we wanted to get your all's thoughts on that, and then the only other section we amended, and correct me if I'm wrong, Caroline, had to deal with, uh, storage on the first floor.
You're right.
Okay, but we wanted to see if you all had got a chance to look at, if you had any questions? And then, we're, we're open, and if, if you don't, then we'd like to take that to Kelly and, and have him incorporate it and then come back to you next month for a first reading on, on amending.
You're not talking about people who's now working on the buildings, correct?
If they are vacant, what we want, we want that.
I understand.
Yeah, and we wanna work with them to get a timeline and have inspections and things like that, yes. We did, we, we wanna work with those individuals, hundred percent. Caroline, is there anything you'd add to it?
No, that's, that's exactly right, but as you can see down there, uh, there's a process to it. And if somebody's working on a building, they have to have a detailed plan of the work that they're going to do to improve the building, as well as a timeline when the work is going to be done, which would, um, you know, we're all for, as he said, this is progressive, not punitive. And we want people to work on their buildings, we want tenants in the building. What we don't want is someone to change the light bulb one year and said, "I'm improving my building," and then wait six months and maybe put in a window, "Well, I'm improving my building," or, you know, move a cord around in another six months and says, "Well, I'm still improving my building." It has to be a substantial improvement with a plan, and that is in there as well.
So what are you giving somebody that owns a building? Are you giving them a set time or you just want a...
I think it's all...
You wanna know what they're thinking?
Yeah, and as long as we see progression, there is no set timeline. As long as we, I mean, we don't want it to be 10 years, but as long as, yeah.
I get it, but you need to sit down and talk to them.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, hundred percent, and we want those...
See what they think.
Yes, we want those, and Caroline and I, we've all, yeah, and in fact, I, I, the details I can't give, but one of the, one of the buildings has already approached me and said, "Here's what we wanna do." I said, "That's awesome, give me a timeline, give me a proposal, and we're ready to work with you, and we want to assist you with this."
I think this is handling it a lot better than...
Absolutely, yes, that's what we wanna do, we, we wanna work with people, hundred percent.
What about the people who are doing swats on their buildings?
Well, um, this, well...
We've passed eminent domain.
Yes, and I have, um, I have contacted a local appraiser who is doing, uh, who is gonna give me, uh, for lack of a better term, a drive-by assessment on five properties. And what I need, I need that assessment because what we need to do is incorporate that into the budget. Because if, if we get to the point of, and you, correct me if I'm wrong on areas, getting to Circuit Court and the court says, "Hey, I'm gonna, we're gonna give you the property, but you have to pay X dollar for it," we've got to have money budgeted for that. But then obviously our goal was to turn around.
Turn around itself.
It'll essentially be an in and an out. Yes.
How long does it take to do that process?
Gosh, you ever de, hell, have you ever dealt with eminent, have you ever dealt with eminent domain?
Um, a quick one would be six months.
That's not bad.
Between, by the time you, uh, filed the complaint and go through the process, uh, you know, one that's heavily defended can be a lot longer than that.
So your goal was to do it about the same time?
Yes.
To keep them all done together?
All five, one suit, yes.
Can they stop that?
Can they stop it? Well, ultimately...
What would stop it?
Well, and the ultimate goal is, once, uh, the way the process works for us, once we identify them, Nicole and I, we're, we're working on it already, we'll take them to the Vacant Property Review Commission. They have to certify them as blighted, vacant, all that stuff. And then they have, what, 90 days to make any improvements that you require? The Vacant Property Review Commission can give them another 90 days. If they don't do what we've laid out, at that point, we come to you all to petition Circuit Court. Does that sound right?
Okay.
And it goes through, there's nothing they can do about this.
Well, they can, they can, they can attest it.
It's a lawsuit, so they can be defended, um, you know, their defenses, you, you just have to make sure that we carefully follow our ordinance and the statute, so we don't give them any grounds to say we didn't...
Matt, you all went to a Main Street meeting, uh, in Frankfurt, did you not?
Uh, yeah, the, well, yeah, yeah. With the national folks, yeah.
Okay, can you, uh, is there any way you could kinda give us a report at some point, uh, about the difference between the national and the local, I mean, what's the future?
Well, basically what they wanted was input from, from directors and city, uh, city, city managers and mayors.
Right.
They were, they were just looking for input on how we felt about the program.
They're not mandating that you do certain things, they're...
Oh, nothing, nothing more than what they keep piling on year after year.
Okay.
Uh, but there's a new president of, uh, Main Street America, and this person, you know, is more interested in having her feet on the ground than the past president. And so she's looking at different states and they're kinda taking their show on the road to see what the impression is from the smaller communities, 'cause, you know, they're all in Chicago. They are in a big office building in, on Jackson Street in Chicago. And so it's pretty hard for them to know really what goes on in a town of 8,800 here in Kentucky. So I think it's a good thing that they're sort of on a fact-finding tour, and as you know, we are one of the oldest Main Streets, uh, in the country. And so they'd asked me to come, and Matt is invaluable because as you know, he was a Main Street manager before he was a city manager. So he's seen it from both sides, so I think that's why we were invited.
Oh, okay, is it, can, could you give us some bullet points, I mean, not now, but just make us a list of kinda the, the salient points?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, we'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is this proposed ordinance in addition, it seems like we have an ordinance already that taxes people?
We do, it, it is in addition, Andrew, yes. And one of the, you know, one of the things with this is, um, one of the indivi, one of, one of the properties we're going after has been on the abandoned vacant property list for three years, but pays the taxes.
Right. Could we raise the tax? I mean, would that be a reason to write to get this?
I, I don't think that, well, I think it's, it's, it's pretty steep as it is, I would keep it where it's at. Yeah, but this will be, this is another tool in the box to go after some of these absentee property owners, what I would call them.
We have more, correct?
I'm sorry.
We have more, the city has more absentee, besides the one...
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, absolutely, true.
I looked over the ordinance and I wanna be careful about becoming the city attorney, but it's n- natural for me to look over an ordinance, so I, I would like the flexibility to be able to work with the city attorney. Maybe not to craft it, but to look over it before...
You're talking about this one? The one that, the one that you have in front of you? Well, I... 'Cause that's the one we're talking about, the, the red lines are what we're talking about adding. This is an ordinance that we adopted back in late fall. And, and all we're doing tonight is discussing, we will, we'll bring the amended version to you next month and then...
So you're saying what's in black is already in effect?
It's already in effect, yes, sir.
And what's been added in red is the proposed additions to it?
Yes, sir, you got it.
Okay.
Yep, you got it. I think, and, and to be honest, Andrew, this is much more flexible for, for property owners. I mean, again, well, you know, our goal isn't to, isn't to, uh, uh, as she said, be punitive, we wanna be progressive, wanna, wanna, we wanna be an asset to these, to these, some of these property owners and help them along.
And if you remember, the last month, the room was filled with people who were glad something's happening, that are for this, there are... You can count on one hand, people that think it's a bad idea.
Okay, any other comments?
Kelly, a good job on this ordinance.
Next on our agenda is a discussion, golf carts.
I know we talked about this this time last year, and, and the reason I bring it back up is just to kinda get your feel for it. I, I'm speaking for, but I know Caitlin would love to have one in order to utilize for tours downtown. We also have a, an annual, are they, is, are they doing their conference this year? Is Carlson Software doing their conference?
No.
No, it's next year.
Next year, okay.
And then it's also the KFA, the Kentucky Firefighter Convention, is also doing their conference next year.
Okay, well, in years past, uh, the Carlson Conference, they have utilized golf carts to transport people back and forth, maybe do some donuts in the parking lot, um, you get that?
Yeah, we had that.
I'm kidding, uh, no, I'm, that, I'm teasing there, but...
I'd have brought that up Caitlin too, so don't blame it on me.
My point is, if, you know, that's, that'd be a great tool for her. But if you all told us that, hey, yeah, 'cause she has the money to be able to go get one, to use it, I think it, we're doing a disservice to the people, the other citizens around town who would like to use them. So I just wanted to kinda gauge your interest and see if this is something you might want to revisit.
I'm gonna ask Mike Palmer that question.
Go ahead, yes ma'am.
So he will answer that.
Okay.
Again, I've, I've looked over, it's governed by KRS, KRS 189, uh, 286, is local government operating a golf cart on public roadway, ordinance qualifications, operations, it lists down some of these ordinances and some of these qualifications for a golf cart. You know, uh, it's been done in the past, I have a problem with it, you know, the problems I can foresee with it, and I've kinda talked mad about it, is I definitely don't want them on the ripper walk when we do the ripper walk, because you don't want intoxicated drivers going from the bar to the campground. I know that's something that we're gonna have to monitor, but based on everything in here, um, you know, they can't be operated on a, a roadway that's posted over 35 miles per hour, okay? Operator of golf cart cannot, uh, pass an intersection where the, they're crossing a roadway that's posted over 35 miles per hour. Has to have a valid driver's license, has to have valid insurance on that vehicle, so there's, there's some stipulations that, that we do. Also, the city, in the ordinance that it drafts, if they wish to do this, can, uh, charge an inspection fee, uh, of a minimum of $5, can exceed $10. It can be permitted every year, so, you know, I, I think there's some stipulations, and there'd be something else that we have to police. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, in the past UPS has used it to deliver packages down in the, in the wintertime downtown. You know, I, I, you see them coming from, uh, campground, going to the speedway on Forest Avenue, you know, they're marked with a triangle, slow-moving vehicle. You know, I, I think as long as they, uh, meet the requirements of the KRS, uh, you know, in the ordinance, then they're fine.
Can we mandate lights on all the time?
Lights on in golf carts?
Yeah.
If you look at the KRS...
Headlights, yeah.
If you look at the KRS, the vehicle is equipped with a ball, headlamps, taillamps, stop lamps, front and rear turn signals, one red flex reflector, exterior, uh, mounted mirror on the driver's side, parking brake. I mean, there's a lot of stipulations in this KRS.
I don't think I've ever seen one.
Can't be put into the ordinance.
Okay. I don't think I've ever seen one with all that on.
189, 286, and it also touches base in here about the reflectors, 189, 820, but 286 is a golf cart.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I have, I have not read the statute, he's reading prone, but I guess the one question that's come to me is, do we need an ordinance in conjunction with the statute?
I think, I think most cities do, that allow that, they do have, they do pass ordinances and I could easily, I could get a model ordinance easily from another city.
Well, I'm not trying to...
No, I understand, no, but yes, most cities do adopt an ordinance.
Did that answer your question?
It does, but I have another question, sorry Caitlin.
Are you fine?
We did have kids that weren't taking people places on the pavilion lot down there, the Lewis and Clark, who were doing donuts in their spare time. They looked to be 16.
Right.
So what do you do there? What do you do there to keep, get your responsible kids...
If we get a call, we're gonna go down there and investigate it and see what's going on, make sure they...
Okay.
Based on this ordinance, based on this KRS, they have a valid driver's license.
Yeah.
And, but that's what they were doing, donuts in the parking lot, very reckless.
Kids on Friday night, doing donuts, that way longer. That, you know, it's, it's been a thing forever, and, you know, we respond to that, we, uh, buy, you know, issue citations appropriately.
You have an extra bag?
Yes, sir, I can get you.
Would you be more comfortable not, not being, not, they're not be allowed after dark? I've never seen a golf cart with all the lights that you're talking, that's in that KRS.
And I haven't either, and, and that's, you know, that's what it's, you know, KRS, but I, I think, you know, again, it's our, our ordinance from the city that we're moving. That's just in the past, and Mr. Carlson, he's run golf carts after the bar, you know?
But you, you buy...
And I think it'd be good, because especially if there's no lights, you know, you're taking a chance on somebody getting whacked.
At dusk, coming up East Second, or going out East Second, you cannot see a golf cart. They gotta have the lights on.
Well, and it could be, you know, if, if, if Caitlin was given ghost tours or something, you could say, and you very have a valid point, private use, uh, dawn till dusk, official use, you know, anytime, or however you would, would wanna word it, but I think, yeah, I think it's right.
And, and here's the, the flip side of that, and I know it's not comparing apples to apples, but it is comparing. I'd be here for a week, I was, how many bicycles do we have right now that's even on the streets of Masonville? You really can't see them till you come upon them. You really can't see them until you come upon them, so.
No, I'm, I'm, no, no, I'm.
I, I, I think they.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, two years ago or three years ago, we were having, you especially, were having, it wanted.
Yeah.
And we supported that decision, did we not? Did we not? Is that my?
Yes, I, I was opposed to it.
So I, I just want to know, so if we're doing a three sixty?
Even though two years ago when we were opposed to it, they still had them on the streets of A-ville.
Right.
You know, I think that with them being regulated like they are, if, if we do this, I feel more comfortable than not having them regulated at all.
But I can tell you, I've seen children drive their grandparents' or parents' golf carts from the river park to the store up here or the restaurant.
And again, and part of that is if we do this, if you do the, the ordinance, the, based on this, you know, you can have them, you know, I don't care if it's an annual inspection permit required, and part of that permit is this vehicle is not to be operated, you know, in violation.
You gotta, you have to be a licensed driver. You have to have a licensed driver.
The operator has to have a valid operator's license.
Right, yeah. I'm good with it, Dan. If you're good with it.
Now, answering my final question. This statute says the city can authorize it. The statute does allow authorization. So it gives us the.
Okay.
Authority to authorize you some.
Okay.
That's the guidelines that lays it out.
In Old Washington, our typical tour is, um, point eight miles. So our, the demographic that's out there is a demographic that's not going to be able to do point eight miles typically in an hour and a half. And it would be very beneficial for us to have an eight-passenger golf cart out there. I was looking at eight-passenger one. Um, and to, so that it's easier, so that we have, it's a better experience for them and that they can see everything that we have and we can add more of the history in Old Washington to the tour. Uh, that's really what, I don't necessarily want it downtown. I want one out in Old Washington. Because I know the sidewalks are a whole nother story out there. Um, but it, there, people are walking on the road right now for their tours and it's dangerous. And I would rather have them on a golf cart, taking them easily from one location to the other. And then again, when we have the large conferences downtown, I think it's just, for, for me, it's for safety so that we're not, you know, a tour guide's not leading people on the sidewalks and tripping and falling or on the street and a car hits them during one of the tours. I would like it for that purpose, for safety.
Well, Caitlin, you all did a wonderful job out there for the chocolate festival.
She did.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, it's so much better when it's compact.
Yes, well, yeah, again, for the walking purposes. But if we had, you know, and we're gonna work on, um, doing a trolley pickup and drop-off from MCTC uh, for the Simon Kent Festival, Art and Chocolate Frontier, so that, um, we can accommodate more people. Because I feel like we hit a limit with the parking out there.
Well, you can, you can use my lot up on the corner.
I appreciate that.
Of Dugby Ark, yeah.
I might take you up on that.
All right.
Would, are you guys opposed to us crafting something and, and bringing it down here?
I'm not opposed to it.
So we can limit it by parts of town, right? We could say only in downtown or only in downtown or Old Washington, on Old Main Street.
Yes. Well, and then the key there is the thirty-five miles an hour. I, I think when we talked last year, a year before, nothing past the, you can't go up the Bydok. You have to be.
We can't go on West Second even, even though it's posted thirty-five.
We can, we can limit, yeah, we, we can.
What about the River Park to the store?
That would all be less than thirty-five miles an hour.
I'm not telling you.
That would be okay.
I'm not telling you to do it. I'm just saying, nobody pays attention to speeding.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Have, have you all talked to anybody in any, I'll just say, resort communities where they do allow golf carts? Could we piggyback on their experience and ask them what their experience is?
I'd be glad to, to send an email out to my association and check with other cities who have, who've adopted this. And I'll get feedback really quick.
We were just on vacation last year and it was a community that allowed golf carts. And, and there was a bad, there was a bad wreck involving one. And it just makes me realize that no matter how much we want it to be nice and we want it to work and all that, it's still dangerous as heck. And it provide little or no protection. I mean, all the lights and the reflectors in the world don't do any good if somebody's driving under the influence or somebody's driving too fast or looking at their phone.
I'll, I'll get an email sent out and I'll tabulate the results and I'll forward it on to, to the five of you so you can take a look at it. I'll get some feedback.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Moving on, discussion budget workshops.
All right, gang, we are getting into that time, so if you don't mind to pull your calendars out. Um, what I would, I, I think we did something similar to this last year. We're not gonna have the books ready for at least a month, if not more. What I'd like to do is sit down with the five of you with the big departments and David and give you a rough preview of, of what their, of what their needs are. So today is obviously the eleventh, and I'd, I'd like to get started on this within the next couple of weeks, depending on how everybody's schedule is. We could do it during the morning, lunchtime, anytime during the day, whatever works for, for the five of you.
I'm good with the next couple of weeks.
I can do it any day.
Okay, okay. Vic?
What?
Anything, anything particular worked for you or not, or a certain time?
I gotta go back. I have to let you know.
That's fine, that's fine.
I've got it on my desk calendar.
That's fine. You, you send it to me, what works for you, and then if everybody else is good, we'll just go.
Just let me know.
Yeah, we will. We'll go through email and, and we'll, we'll come up with some days and times. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I've, I've got bank meetings on Tuesday.
You just let me know.
Not.
Not, okay, that's fine. You got bank meetings?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? Okay.
Fade away, fade away.
Okay, I'll get an email sent out to you and we'll come up with some, some days and times.
Okay. Resolution declaring Historic National Preservation Month, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Resolution declaring National Preservation Month. Whereas preservation of Kentucky's historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investment, revitalizes downtowns and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, and whereas preservation has been established as a public policy under the National Historic Preservation Act, which provided the framework for the Kentucky Legislature to create the state Historic Preservation Office in nineteen sixty-six, which enabled successful preservation partnerships between federal, state, and local governments. Whereas the Kentucky Main Street Program was created by Kentucky Heritage Council in nineteen seventy-nine to reverse economic decline in central business districts through historic preservation and redevelopment of commercial buildings. And to date has generated more than four point seven billion of investment throughout the Commonwealth since its inception. And whereas Kentucky Main Street continues to provide transformative, especially for rural communities, seeking to attract and maintain small, locally-owned businesses that invest back into the community and create strong downtowns that anchor additional growth and investments. And whereas Kentucky Main Street Communities cumulatively reported statewide investment of sixty-one million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars for twenty twenty-three, representing seventeen million, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-four of private spending matched by thirty-two million, eighty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-three in public dollars in public improvements, along with a net gain of six hundred forty-nine new jobs and one hundred twenty-six new businesses. And whereas the city of Maysville is nationally accredited for twenty twenty-four as certified by both Kentucky Main Street and the National Main Street Center. And for twenty twenty-three, reported one point eight million dollars in public and private investment in its community. Whereas historic preservation is relevant to communities because of the wealth of Kentucky's historic buildings, sites, and structures. And it is important that citizens of the Commonwealth recognize and value this heritage. And whereas Kentucky Main Streets will celebrate Main Street Month and honor its forty-fifth anniversary to coincide with National Historic Preservation Month, May first through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that May twenty twenty-four is National Preservation Month and Kentucky Preservation Month.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Curville?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing application for Kentucky Homeland Security Grant, twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Resolution of the city of Maysville, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by KOHS to facilitate and administer the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. This resolution also establishes procurement policy for any KOHS-approved project for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four application cycle. Whereas the city of Maysville, Kentucky desires to make application for United States Department of Homeland Security and or Commonwealth of Kentucky funds for a project to be administered by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Whereas it is recognized that an application for and approval of the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security funds impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute and furnish all required documentation, including a memorandum of agreement as may be required by KOHS for the furtherance of the above referenced project and to act as the authorized correspondence for said project. For the purpose of any KOHS-funded projects using fiscal year twenty twenty-four funds, the city will use the provisions of KRS forty-five A for the purchase of equipment and or services. For any equipment and or services under forty thousand dollars, three quotes will be obtained. For any equipment and or services that exceeds forty thousand dollars, the provisions of KRS forty-five A will apply.
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Curville?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing land and water conservation fund grant, twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
Resolution authorizing land and water conservation fund grant. Whereas the city of Maysville, Kentucky proposes to develop recreational resources to provide for the health and well-being of the general public. And whereas the city of Maysville intends to make application to the Department for Local Government for assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of nineteen sixty-five. Whereas the Land and Water Conservation Fund is limited to funding a maximum of fifty percent of proposed project cost. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the grant application to Land and Water Conservation Fund. Be it further resolved that the city of Maysville hold in reserve fifty percent of the proposed project costs for the purpose of matching the Land and Water Conservation Fund assistance. Be it further resolved that in the event the, a grant is awarded, the city of Maysville understands that it will sign assurances to comply with all applicable federal and state laws, rules and regulations, especially Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, Act, and Section five oh four of the nineteen seventy-three Rehabilitation Act.
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Curville?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing KLC Workers' Compensation Safety Grant Application, twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
Resolution authorizing application for twenty twenty-four Kentucky League of Cities Workers' Compensation Safety Grant. Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute an application for the twenty twenty-four Kentucky League of Cities Workers' Compensation Safety Grant. This resolution is retroactive to March twenty-four, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Curville?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Close session pursuant to KRS six one point eight one zero one F. Discussion which might lead to the appointment of an individual employee.
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Curville?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
First, Lou, you hang tight, and then Chief and Assistant Baker, you hang low. Yeah, come on.
Teach us your ways.